Okay. We're on the record. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Announcement of this meeting is made with, is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
I apologize, I was muted. Mr. Dinsmore. Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel. Mr. Mendel.
Steven, you're muted.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have present with us tonight, our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer, Mr. Canjia, our court attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And Nora, I believe Mr. Mealy was able to join us. Mr. Mealy, are you there?
He's not on yet. We're still working.
All right. And he's in progress then. All right. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Again, John, that was like a Super Bowl halftime show.
I'm glad his kids will get this here. Okay, so we do have some minutes for approval. I counted seven minutes from our planning board and two from the minor board. Is there any reason why we should do these separately or can we do them together?
Well, let's ask the question, does anybody have any corrections or objections to the minutes of any of the meetings? I think that's.
On the screen.
Anyone who has, who has reached out to me.
I reached out there, Nora.
Sounds good.
If there are no objections or corrections, the minutes we can. Hi Dominic, I'm glad you're here. If there are no objections or corrections to any of the meeting minutes, they can be moved together.
Yes.
Hi.
Mr. Dinsmore, you have an objection?
No, I second.
Okay.
So Mr. Dinsmore moves to approve all the minutes before the board.
Well, I wasn't at all of the meetings unfortunately.
Well, can, can something, perhaps somebody else should move them then?
Yes, but Amelia would be great.
I can move them.
All right, Judy has moved to.
Judy Hernandez, I move the, move all the minutes to be approved.
Judy, have a second.
Mandel, second.
Mandel, second.
Now note that a yes vote here is taken as a yes vote on those that you are eligible for and extension on all others.
All right, very good. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy. Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes. Dominic, you're muted at the moment. Were you able to, your vote?
Yes.
Very good.
Got it.
Okay. With that work behind us, we now have in front of us the continuation of the agenda item for today. I guess it's normal for us to do a ask of the public if there's anything that's not on the formal agenda, however, I think we'll hold that to the end for this meeting, in case it comes up. And with that said, we'll move on to the Lanedex application number 19:519. And before we get started with that, Mr. O'Neill, did you receive the revised letters from our planner and engineer?
Yes, we did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. And will you be providing testimony to the points they suggested in their letters?
Yes, we will. We also answered those letters with our professionals sending letters to the board, so we'll be relying on that also. But we will be testifying along those lines.
Okay. All right, would it be possible for you to just acknowledge the wit, the testimonies that have been given so far? I'm not asking you to provide those testimonies over again, but just recall the those who we've already heard from.
Sure, we've, we started out last time with our engineer, Dan Miola. We went into Dave Minow, our architect. Jason Tronco, our landscape architect also spoke. And that's when we ended the meeting. We're going to have some additional testimony from each of those individuals, except for maybe Mr. Tronco. Because I don't think there were any questions for Mr. Tronco, but he is available for questions should the board have it. But we did do some revision to some plans, so I'd like to discuss that. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll give a brief summary of what we did back on March 9.
It, it, I'm reminded that I would just like to make one more announcement before we get too deep into things. And just two things, one for the general public, it's often common that we'll provide public questions for the witnesses in between witnesses. On this occasion, due to the virtual nature, we feel like it'll be more beneficial to make sure that the witnesses are able to speak in, in sequence and then we'll open things up for public questions after the witnesses have all provided their testimony. Further, we're going to try to set a, a break at around 9:00 PM tonight, in case things are running long. And we'll set a, an end of meeting goal of about 10 o'clock, so we'll try to get things done in that timeframe. Mr. O'Neill, does that all sound acceptable to you?
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and please continue then.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, we were before you last, on March 9th, before, well, before everything. And we were describing the project here. This is designed to replace the existing Lanedex office complex, which currently consists of nine office buildings. The entire site, as we described it as it exists now, is 45 acres, consists of 450,000 square foot of offices and 1,600 car parking space. Ultimately, with this plan, only three buildings will remain when we're done with the project. The other buildings and parking lots are to be replaced by two mid-rise apartment buildings and 75 townhomes, along with convenience retail. That's retail design to service the residents on the site. It's not destination retail, as you may have seen in some other projects. The first phase will consist of the first mid-rise building along with 75 townhomes and the athletic fields and associated site work. Part of this phase is also going to be redoing Lanedex Boulevard into a grand entrance way, which you saw at the last hearing. Now, one of the changes we're going to talk about tonight concerns the phasing of the buildings themselves. At the time we were presenting back in March, we described building the townhomes first. That has now changed due to the market conditions. We're going to build the first mid-rise building and the townhomes at the same time. That's basically because of the changes in the market. Both, both mid-rise buildings and the townhomes are going to have extensive amenities for their residents, which you saw at the last meeting, interior to the buildings themselves, and in the case of the townhomes, by way of a clubhouse. The parkings for the mid-rise buildings are going to be interior parking decks within the buildings themselves that'll be tucked into the building. Parking allocations, which you're going to hear about this evening, are going to be shared between the apartment buildings and the office buildings. I'll remind the board that one of the issues that was very important to the township during the development of this plan was to maintain the buffer immediately adjacent to the Green Hill neighborhood to the south in its undisturbed state. We're adding to that buffer as part of this application. And we're also putting the backyards of the townhomes up against that buffer to make it a seamless residential to residential transition. In the time since the last meeting, we've presented revised plans to the board, as I mentioned before. And we've submitted letters trying to answer some of the questions presented by the board members and their professionals. With that, I'd like to go ahead and call my first witness. I'd like to go ahead and call Mr. Miola, who is waiting.
If you're here, would you state your name and state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure, Daniel Miola, M.I.O.L.A.
And you are testifying as?
Civil engineer.
All right, then would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and your experience?
Absolutely. Have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Villanova University, master's degree in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. I have a PE license in New Jersey that's in good standing. And I testified before dozens of boards throughout the state, including this one.
Chairman, his qualifications are submitted?
Any objections? Please continue.
All right, I forgot to swear you. I apologize. I'm out of order. I'm out of practice here in Parsippany. Raise your hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide and have provided thus far is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your witness, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Miola. Why don't you go ahead and run us through some of the changes that have been made to the plan?
Yes, so as our attorney, Mr. O'Neill, had indicated, we have made a few changes to our site layout in connection to with comments received from the New Jersey DEP for the wetland permitting of the project. So I'm going to walk you through these changes. However, just as a, as an overview, these changes are rather minor in the grand scheme. The, the overall square footages and, you know, number of units and parking spaces are all generally the same as what was presented at our March hearing. So with that being said, the few changes that were made were mainly to address a comment by the state that the equivalent amount of above-ground detention surface area should be maintained. And so on this site, the above-ground detention area is the existing basin on the east side of the site, adjacent to Route 287. And in order to maintain an equivalent area for that, we've, we've kept some of that basin as indicated on the extreme right side of this exhibit. And then we've added other above-ground basins, one to the northeast of Building 1, which is the first multifamily building. And then another small above-ground basin within the eastern, the east-west spine road through the site known as Park Boulevard.
So as from part of Mr. O'Neill, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I apologize. I'm going to interrupt your flow and I apologize for that. Mr. O'Neill, do you want to mark the entire side, slide packet here?
Yes, why don't we go ahead and do that? I believe.
I don't know where we left off. I apologize.
I do. If you could just give me just one minute. This would be Exhibit B.
So, well, well, the second exhibit would usually be A2?
Yes, in the transcript it was marked, oh yes, A1, I'm sorry, A2.
A1, so we'd be on, so, so this is simply A2? And that's the entire slide package that we're about to see?
Yes.
Sounds good. Sorry, Mr. Mealy, continue.
We're all out of practice.
Yes. No problem, no problem. So with the addition of these, these above-ground basin areas, we did, those did trigger a few site layout changes. Mainly the changes happened to the athletic field that's shown on the, the east side of the site. That was reoriented and, and, and moved a bit, shifted, as well as the, the parking that serves that field. With that being said, however, the parking actually was able to grow. We had been showing 20 spaces for that athletic field. And this revised layout proposes 29 spaces. So, which would be nine more than what we had. Other than that, as I testified, the, the size of the townhomes, the number of units, the size of the multifamily buildings are the same. There's still a retail component within the multifamily buildings, same square footage as was previously proposed. The driveways serving the site are also the same. There's the main east-west spine road known as Park Boulevard that will continue to connect to the existing Parsippany Road, Lanedex Plaza Drive intersection, just as was proposed before. And then we have north-south smaller service driveways that lead to the other components of the site. So all that is generally consistent with what we had before. Also, I will remind you that the, there are three existing office buildings that are proposed to remain on the site, known and identified on here as Building 700, Building 800, and Building 900. The rest of the office buildings, the other six, are proposed to be demolished in order to accommodate this development. Also, as, as was the same as before, from a stormwater management perspective, we have the same volume of stormwater detention in order to address the stormwater management requirements of the township. And then the last point, as, as was stated by our attorney, Mr. O'Neill, the the buffer on the south side of the property, adjacent to the Green Hill neighborhood, is proposed to remain in its, in its existing state, undisturbed. And so that, that's really the, the overview of the, the changes that were made and, and, and and general functionality of the proposed site plan. Another item that changed associated with this project is the timeline. Given it's been five months since our last hearing and we've had the, the global pandemic that has changed the industry. So just to provide some testimony on the project schedule, project is still proposed to be constructed into two main phases. The first phase consisting of the townhomes, the multifamily building 1, and the athletic field, as well as the Boulevard coming in and out of the site. That project is anticipated to start in the spring of 2021 and will last approximately two years. The second phase of the project consists of building multifamily building 2. We anticipate construction will start for that building at the end of year 2022, which will also approximately two years. Another component of this application is a subdivision application, which had been also proposed back in March. Two lots exist on this site. And as was the case during our first hearing, we're proposing to subdivide the, the site into five lots. Mainly one lot for each, each component of the, of the project. And so that the number of lots to stay the same, the geometry of the subdivision was, was modified a bit to accommodate the new locations of all the different components of the site. And in addition to a subdivision application, we also applied for a major soil movement application. And as I testified during our first hearing, most of this soil will be moved onsite from, from a place onsite to a place onsite in order to to bring the site to the finished grade elevations that we have proposed for these different buildings. With that being said, there is a, an overall material export that will be necessary to accommodate the finished grades on this site. And as was agreed to during the first hearing, the applicant will work with the township on the times of day that that export will occur and the route that, that the trucks will take leaving this site to get on the highway. And then finally, before I conclude my direct testimony, I did, just wanted to acknowledge receipt of the township's planning and, and engineering professional comment letters, which we did provide a response to. And I, I take, take no issue with any of the comments within that letter, as indicated by our, our response. And I agree to work to, with the township professionals to satisfy these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Miola. I have no further questions for you. I do, as you just indicated, you did submit written responses to the reports in the time that we were away. And you're ready to answer any questions on that regard. Is that true?
Yes.
Thank you. I, no further questions for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Favate, would you like to start with any questions for Mr. Miola? Susan? Okay. I'll shift to Mr. Cagiano.
Yeah, I have, I guess, Mr. Miola, just backing up to your comment or on the DEP application status, you said receive comments. Did you receive an approval at this time or not yet?
Not yet. We have a wetland LOI from the DEP, but our permit application associated with the proposed impacts of the project was submitted several months ago and the approval is pending.
And I asked that mainly because many of our questions and, you know, it's, it's quite a complicated stormwater management system you have on site. And one of the items such as geotechnical investigations, those are typical items that are requested or required under a standard DEP review. So I, I, that's what I'm trying to see, if you got any feedback from the state on your submission for the major development?
So we've gotten no formal feedback in response to our, our permit application that was submitted. However, before we submitted that application, we did have a pre-op meeting with the state to discuss the proposed impacts, the stormwater design, you know, in advance of our submittal. So, you know, that occurred probably in April and we submitted towards the end of May. So although, you know, we haven't received formal comments back from them yet, we are confident that our application to them is going to be, you know, favorably received.
Okay. With regard to water allocation, I see the water superintendent, could, could you, could you comment on the availability of water currently?
I can actually take that, Mr. Canjia. I was attending a conference call this morning with the court involving the water allocation. And it is being worked on as we speak. It is expected that we will have water for this project.
Okay, so that's, that, so you're expecting to have water. There's, there's a superintendent's letter said there was no water.
There are a number of issues being worked through with the township right now.
Okay. With regard to the shared parking, could you go into more detail? I don't know if you have any exhibits, particularly the shared component with the office use and particularly building number 700, where, you know, under the proposed layout, the parking surrounding that building is, is being removed. Can you give us a rundown on where the users of Building 700 will be parking and not only in the office area, but where the shared component of it is going to be located?
Mr. Lothian is going to be testifying to that a little later.
Okay. Again, most of our comments are of technical nature. You had already commented that you will, you will comply with our request and comments. I'm trying to see here if there's anything else that needed point of discussion. I don't, nothing's jumping out at me at this, this time. Okay, so your parking discussion will be by your traffic engineer?
That's correct.
And I don't know if this is going to be by the traffic engineer as well, but the the Morris County Planning Board had brought up signal improvements. Did you want to, is that with your traffic professional or is that with Ms. Miola?
That's going to be Mr. Lothian to guess.
Okay, all right. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind me, I was clicking the wrong unmute button. Apologize.
No problem. Story's yours.
Mr. Miola, can, I just want to run through the, the changes again to make sure that I've captured it correctly. So you said, the first thing would be the 75 townhomes, the multifamily building 1, the athletic and all the related infrastructure, and that would begin in spring 2021 and last two years?
Yes.
Phase 2 would be simply the second multifamily building and all related amenities and infrastructure, and that would start at the end of 2022 and also last two years, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm just curious why, why phase 2 lasts two years when it's just one building as opposed to plus infrastructure?
Well, those, those project schedules were really given to me by the project team that includes the contractor that we're working with. So I, you know, I think in short, the during phase 1, there's a lot of different components of the site that will be built together. Whereas phase 2, there's just really just one building, but it still takes approximately two years to, to build that building.
And it's, and it's two years, so phase 2 would be two years from spring of 2021, so spring of 2023, all of those buildings in phase 2 would be built and will be occupiable. And then 2 would be two years from the, from the start of late 2022, so 2024 for that phase complete. Is that correct?
So I, I have phase 2, which is the multifamily building 2, construction starting at the end of the year 2022 and lasting approximately two years. So that would be to the end of, of year 2024.
Okay. Okay. And I, I'm, I think previously it was anticipated that, I mean, this was obviously pre-COVID. Anticipated townhomes would start this summer and the multifamily building 1 would start this fall. So basically you compress those into one phase that would be anticipated to start next spring, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Susan, 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 I'm going to interrupt you just one second. There's a lot of background noise. If everybody that is not speaking could mute, that would be appreciated. There's a lot of people that are mute right now.
Okay, that, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Mr. O'Neill, which, which witness will be testifying to solid waste?
I, Mr. Miola, do you know anything about the solid waste question about the location of the enclosures?
I defer to the architects on the location. But I know that there'll be a private waste hauler hired to to, to do that for this site. But the specific location, I'll defer to Mr. Minow.
All right.
Okay, and will Mr. Minow also be testifying about fences?
Depends on which fence.
It was, it was a comment in our July memo where we talked about, it's actually retaining walls, I apologize, that retaining walls look like they're over six feet and therefore need to be tiered in accordance with the township regulations. And I was asking for testimony on that.
Yes, so we will be tiering. Yes, so we will be tiering the retaining walls in order to meet the ordinance and comply with the township requirement for that. It is not, we do not, we're not seeking any relief associated with that. So we will be tiering them in accordance with the town requirements.
And so you'll be submitting provisions accordingly and we can go through that in compliance, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Did any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Miola?
Steve Mandell.
Go ahead, Steve.
If I recall correctly, the agreement that we reached before about the trucks removing soil was that the hours of operation would be 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM and the route would be within discussions with the township.
So I, I had written down, I thought it was 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM and that the route would be north on Parsippany Road to Littleton. However, you know, I think overall, in speaking for the applicant, we will work with the township certainly regarding that route. And likely regarding the hours, I just would need to know. I think the, what I had in my notes was 9:00 to 4:30. So if the hours are going to be different, we would have to discuss that as a team.
My notes showed 9:00 to 3:00, so.
Mr. Chairman, mine showed 4:30, but if the board, the board concurs.
We'll agree to that condition.
I appreciate that, Mr. O'Neil. We do have a school that's relative.
I'm sorry, can we say that again? I was going with, with connection issues.
We've agreed to limit the hours to 9:00 to 3:00 because of the school and the immediate proximity of the area. We're also going to, the route we discussed at the last meeting was north on Parsippany Road to the highway entrances that way. So if the, if the council or the board wants to modify that route, we're certainly open to that. We think that's the most direct way away from residential. But that's what we discussed and we'll agree to the hours and the route subject to modification.
Okay, and that's for construction trucks, I assume. I'm sorry, I missed a big change. Yes, okay. I'm busy trying to tell people what they need to do to clean up the transmission here.
And thank you for doing that, Scott.
Do what I can.
Okay. Are there any other board members with questions at this time?
I do have a question on the stormwater management that he was that Daniel was talking about. You were discussing with DEP and your, did you redistribute the different bases around and you had those minor changes on the plan? Is that in response to the new adopted stormwater regulations that the DEP has for past March? And I guess they're going to be required by next year, but this is when this is coming in where instead of using like the old gray infrastructure, you know, will these basins be green? Or are they holding basins?
These are stormwater detention basin.
Right. So they're, they're the all-time detention basins instead of like trying to use like maybe a methods?
So that is correct. However, they will be landscaped. In particular, the smaller basins, the one off Park Boulevard, as well as the one to the northeast of building one will be pretty attractively landscaped, so higher visibility areas.
Judy, 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 hold on. I'm getting the sense that we're getting reverb from you. So if you could turn yourself on to speak and off to listen.
Okay. How about that? Can you hear me?
Yes. Well, something just happened that the reverb is gone. Nope, there it is.
Are you hearing me?
Yes.
We hear you, but we hear you four or five times over.
Oh, okay. I can't hear you. That's probably the problem because I have a different speaker. And so for me to hear you, I have this on and that's why. So when I said you, you probably did hear me, but I didn't hear you. So. So.
Try turning your volume down a bit.
Okay. Is that a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. My comment is because this is one of the first big projects that we have coming on where in Parsippany, we like to stick to the, and I know you probably are, the newest stormwater regulations by, for New Jersey, the DEP, and that would be using the green infrastructure first. And I understand that you're going to make it look really nice, but I'm more concerned about just trying to infiltrate and filter the water back into the ground if there's any opportunities to do that rather than having. I mean, it's a big property and I know you're taking some of the impervious out with these eliminating some of the other buildings. So my question is, are these basins, is there any way to change it so there could be green infrastructure or that's not possible because you need to hold it for peak flow?
So I think it's possible to design these basins for both, both to be more bio-basins in accordance with the green infrastructure requirements as well as give them the capacity during the larger storm events to handle water quantity. As you indicated, from an overall perspective, the townhomes are proposed an area that's all surface parking. Building one is proposed an area that's all surface parking. So from like a net paved area, paved vehicular areas, there's a, there's a pretty large reduction proposed here. But even, even with that, I think there is an opportunity to design the basins we have as bio-basins for the smaller storm events while still allowing them to function as water quantity basins for the, you know, the hundred-year storm, for instance.
Yeah, which we've been seeing a lot of. So I appreciate that because water quality is is so important, as you know. And my other question was about the water and I guess Mr. O'Neil was talking about that the water scarcity thing is a concern for me. And I know you guys said that you're talking and they're working on it, but how do you work on that? Really, I'm just not trying to be, I'm curious, how do you work on an issue of water scarcity?
Well, I'm not sure how exactly comment regarding what's before the court. But I can say that the agreements entered into with both this developer and the other developers guarantee water availability. I know that the council has been taking action about improving water capacity here in the township and that there are restrictions on projects that are not part of the affordable housing plan being built and utilizing water. So those, all those factors together, the township's actions, township improvement and the township's working very hard to solve the problem. I can say that. We expect that the problem will be resolved in time for this project.
All right, that makes, that makes a little bit more sense. And it is just to tell you everyone, it's a big concern. I hear people in town talking about that, water quality and water restriction. So thank you for addressing it. And I'm done with my questions.
Thank you, Judy. Anybody else at this time?
Yeah, just on that point, it's Andrew Cangiano. On that point of the water allocation, and I don't have the in front of me, but the projects, the five projects that were included in the township's allocation plan for the affordable housing site, I don't think this one was on it. But I think we just want to make it a condition of approval that, that the allocation is made available prior to any construction. You know, should this, should this application be, be approved, that that should be a condition of approval that the allocation is made available prior to construction.
Well, I can tell you that in the court, through the proceedings of the court, this project is part of the projects that are getting the water allocation. We're not subject to the water restriction with this project. And I believe that condition that you mentioned is a prerequisite for pulling permits anyway, but certainly we could do that here too.
Okay, thank you.
So no objections?
No objection.
Okay. All right.
Is it too late for me to ask another question?
Go ahead, Judy, quickly.
Really quickly. Is, is there any thought that green roofs would be possible on the bigger buildings and that's it? Green, green roofs?
So I would defer to our architect on that. However, the multifamily buildings do have courtyards, which you can see in the, in the center and within some of the invents of the building. There's landscaped courtyards which do, you know, provide some vegetation and some opportunity for infiltration.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. O'Neil, I'll turn it back over to you for your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, I'd like to go ahead and call Mr. Minno again. Thank you, Mr. Miola.
Thank you.
Sir, are you here?
Excuse me one second. Was that last witness sworn?
What was that?
Was the last witness sworn?
Yes, the last witness was sworn.
Thanks.
This witness will be sworn again, I guess, but he was previously sworn.
Okay.
Mr. Minno, are you there?
I'm here.
Thank you. As I mentioned, you were previously sworn, Mr. Carlson. I don't know if we need to do it again. There were a number of questions outstanding, Mr. Minno. Why don't you just run us through some of the changes that have been made?
I'm not getting anything except static.
Mr. Carlson, we can't hear you.
We were getting the static whenever Scott turned off his mute. So I don't know what that means.
Would you like me to proceed?
Okay, there we are. There we are. There we are. Sorry. I don't think you were getting my headphones. I'm going to go ahead and swear, Mr. Minno, again, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Given the circumstances, if you'd raise your right hand, please, you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I'm going to go ahead and have you accept it again as well. Would you state? Well, first state and spell your name for the record, please.
My name is David Minno. M-I-N-N-O.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Sure. I'm the principal of Minno and Wasco Architects and Planners, an 85-person architecture and planning firm based in Lambertville, New Jersey and Newark, New Jersey. And I have a master of architecture degree from the University of Pennsylvania. And I've been practicing for over 35 years and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey as well as other United States.
License is in good standing?
Yes.
Chairman, his qualifications are submitted?
Any comments from the board? Please proceed, Mr. Minno. You're acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a very simple bit of testimony to go through tonight, really three items. And the first one relates to a change in building mix on the multifamily building one. And it's, this change in unit mix is due to recent market studies that we've conducted and we've just made a minor shift in the mix. And let me review that with you. From the, we still have 275 units in this building. That has not changed. But we have 10 more studios than previously submitted. So here's a comparison chart. So we have 10 more studios, giving us 27 total studio units. And this is the market rate count. And then the one-bedroom units, we have 121, which was 13 less than our prior application. On the two-bedroom side, we have three more two-bedrooms, bringing us to 63 two-bedrooms. And the affordable units, the 60 affordable units have not changed. We still have 12 one-bedrooms, 36 two-bedrooms and 12 three-bedrooms. But that part of it hasn't changed. The next area that I'd like to talk about is building height. And the reason for this change is simply that we've done more technical structural work on designing these buildings and we need a slight bit more height to accomplish them. So the height ordinance permits buildings of no more than 65 feet in height. And in the prior testimony, both buildings one and two were 64 feet, four inches in height. And now we are asking for 64 feet, 10 inches, which is an increase in height of six inches over the prior application. And again, this is simply due to calculating the dimensions that we need for the structure for the building. But we require no variance here. And lastly, I'd like to talk about, well, first, let me say too that there's no change in building two's mix and there's no changes at all in the townhome area. Next. You can move on to, this shows building one. I'm sorry, building two, as it faces the green. I think these were placed in testimony before with our retail area and residential above and a very activated green space. So the third area that I want to testify about tonight is our garage screening, which I said that I would provide more detail for at the last hearing. And what you're looking at is two elevations of residential building one, the multifamily building one. The top left drawing is the eastern view, which would be viewing the building from 287 side to the building. And the garage is the center area that's depicted in white and gray there. And the garages are basically wrapped by the building on two sides and they're exposed on two sides. And what we've done is in the picture that's in the upper right-hand corner, we're using an aluminum mesh metal screen on top of the precast parking deck to add shadow and dimension to the building and really take out the, sort of the stark nature of a precast parking deck. And there will be planting in front of this screen as well, and that's shown on the landscaping plans. And if you look at the second elevation, O2, on the bottom of the sheet, this would be the slight view that you would have from the ramp coming off of Route 80 to Route 287. So this is the north elevation. And then again, in the center portion of the drawing, you can see the whitish color precast building with the same aluminum mesh metal screen. This is a commonly used treatment for parking decks and it's very attractive and has a contemporary look that fits in well with the architecture of the buildings. Our next slide would show building one, or residential building two, I'm sorry. This particular, there's only one exposure of the parking deck here and it's on the eastern side, again, facing 287, but more immediately in the foreground is the access road that will be developed to get to the townhomes. So again, we're using the same device, lower left corner showing the aluminum mesh screening. And you see the center of the building, which in this case has, the parking deck has sloping ramps on this side. So it's even more important to get this vertical mesh screening to give some shadow and dimension for that building. And again, we do. And again, we do have landscaping in the foreground of this view. We're showing it without landscaping. So that's really my direct testimony and changes. The rest of my testimony stands from our prior hearings, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
I have a question for you, Mr. Minno, and I think it relates to the question that was asked earlier regarding the refuse disposal. That's gonna be interior in the parking deck, isn't it?
Not quite the parking deck, but let me, if we go back to the site plan exhibit, the first exhibit. So in building, multifamily building one, if you notice, the blue areas on the north side toward Route eighty, the left-hand blue area is a service area. And what we have in the building is we have on each floor of the building, we have a refuse room, which has a trash chute and a recycling collection area that's collected in bins. And the trash chute goes down to a trash termination room on the first floor, internal to the building. And at that room, there's a compactor that compacts the trash and prepares it for pickup. Building maintenance brings down the recycling from the upper floors, and they also prepare it for pickup. So on trash pickup day and time, and this is a scheduled event for multifamily buildings like this, shortly before pickup, the building maintenance staff brings the containers with the compacted trash and the recyclables to that rear driveway, at which point they're picked up by the trash hauling company. For building two, it's a similar process. If you look at the building on the right-hand side, there's a tan area facing Route two-eighty-seven between the parking garage and the orange area, which is our retail area. So in that corridor area is our trash termination room from the residential above. And that's where the similar process occurs, and trash is brought out to the driveway on the right on trash day by the building staff. That's how the solid waste from these buildings is handled. The townhomes have individual garages, two-car garages, where trash would be stored and brought out outside the garage door on trash day. So I hope that answers that question.
Thank you, Mr. Minno. I have no further questions for this witness.
All right. Ms. Vate, any questions for the witness?
Just to follow up the trash, the the townhomes, though, would they be using the private hauler or township services?
I believe private hauler.
Okay, so private hauler for the whole site.
That's correct.
Mr. Minno, can you provide any testimony on anticipated signage on the two residential multifamily buildings? Or is that another witness?
That would be me, but we're gonna come back for specific signage once we have it designed, and we will submit that to the planning board at that time.
Okay. Sorry, that's all I had for Mr. Minno.
All right, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. speaking.
Yeah, hello. I just, in line with the the refuge, what about the deliveries and like freight elevators? Or what is the intended, when people are moving in and out, how how they ought to get their furniture and whatnot throughout the the building?
Sure. I think I testified to this last time, but it's a simple answer. It happens in the same location as the trash area in building one and also the trash area in building two. Again, movements are scheduled events with the leasing staff of the buildings. So they're scheduled on a particular day and time, usually in an off-peak time for the building. And they, there is a receiving area and a freight elevator that's accessible from both of those locations, the blue area to the north of building one and the tan area on the east side of building two.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any questions from the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, before we move on, can I ask one?
Mr. Chairman, Dominic Mealy here with a question.
Go ahead, let Dominic go.
Okay.
For Mr. O'Neil, I believe at the previous meeting, there was some discussion about the area just to the east, far east, next to two-eighty-seven. Was there a decision to change the format of the tree so that fire department access could be available towards the townhomes to the south? The the roadway in the center of the application appears to be rather narrow, so I'm concerned about fire access to that entire area where the clubhouse is and where the townhomes are.
Mr. Mealy, this has been vetted by the fire department. I can bring back Mr. Maiola to discuss this, but the the access down along the Highway two-eighty-seven wasn't practical, given the design and JDEP wants for the detention basin, which is, of course, a wetland here, detention basins are wetlands. So they were very particular about the design there. And the fire department has vetted the plan for entrance down that north-south road you mentioned. And there's also gonna be, at the IBW, emergency entrance there. We've testified to that previously.
Yeah, I was concerned.
They've got a couple ways in.
I was concerned whether that might be an alternative to their access. That's fine. Thank you.
Yes.
Chairman, Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
I apologize, Mr. O'Neil. This might have been a better question for the engineer than the architect, and feel free to have the engineer answer if that's the case. But with the change to the phasing plan, how does that affect the phasing of affordable housing throughout the project?
Well, I can answer that pretty briefly.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Well, housing is contained in the mid-rise building. It's identified in Mr. Minno's plans. So it'll be provided in accordance with the regulations regarding affordable housing. And it should be actually provided earlier than it was before. It was still compliant in the original phasing plan with the townhomes being built first. But this pulls those affordable housing units up in the timeframe.
That's all I wanted to know, Mr. O'Neil. I want to make sure they weren't getting pushed to the back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandel. Go ahead.
I guess this is a question for the architect. In Parsippany's desire to be green, we like to see EV charging, especially in the garages. Is there a provision for that at this point?
Yes, we have a provision for a number of charging stations within each of the garages.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question as to who is responsible for snow removal?
I guess the owner-operator is gonna be responsible for that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I just have, I just have one myself. It it looks as if you've increased the number of two-bedrooms by three units. Is there any way we can do away with that additional two bedrooms? The concern is, quite frankly, even though it's only three, is that we're increasing the number of potential schoolchildren in an area which is already quite crowded.
I'll have to get back to you on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And one other question. I discussed the landscaping that was being provided in front of the aluminum mesh on the garages. Will that be a climbing vegetation, or is that expected to just be at the ground level?
No, it it, I can answer that and maybe Mr. Tronka later, but we're not gonna use these as green screens. One of the reasons is that some of our facades of the garages face north and would not grow. But we've found this to be a very attractive type of situation. I'm talking about trees and shrubs that are planted in the foreground of the building.
Okay, that's just my question.
Mr. Chairman, I had one more, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Ms. Vate.
Mr. Minno, are the garages being constructed in such a way that in the future they could support solar panels? There's no parking on the roofs, correct?
Other. I'm sorry, there is parking on the roof, yes. And to answer your question, yes, in the future, there it could, those garages could most likely support solar panels. It would be up on columns. But it wouldn't, we'd have to come back to this board for that. And that's not our intent now to place solar panels there.
I'm just gonna interrupt one more. I'm I'm gonna interrupt again, just to remind everybody that's not speaking to mute, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump back, I had an opportunity to consult with my client, and we will change the bedroom mix along the lines you suggested.
I appreciate that. Even one bedrooms would be better. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, if I could just clarify, so you're reducing the additional two bedrooms. What will those units then become?
They would become one bedrooms.
He can do it on his feet.
They would become one bedrooms. Or one-bedroom dens, you know.
Very good. All right. Any other questions from the board at this time? Mr. O'Neil, please go ahead with your next witness.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to go ahead and call Mr. Lothian. He will be a new witness for this.
Sir, if you'd raise your right hand, can you hear me?
I can.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Alan Lothian, A.L.A.N.L.O.T.H.I.A.N.
And you are testifying as?
Traffic engineer.
Then would you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Okay, I'm a senior project manager with Langen. I've been with Langen for over twenty-two years. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers, a Master's of Science in Transportation from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and a few other states. I'm in good standing. And I've testified before multiple boards in the state of New Jersey. I almost got to testify before this board in March, but that was delayed until now.
I would submit.
Mr. O'Neil, what was your comment?
I would submit Mr. Lothian as an expert for traffic engineer.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Lothian? All right, Mr. Lothian, you're acceptable to the board as a traffic expert. Please continue.
Thank you.
I'll have Mr. Lothian.
So tonight I have three topics to discuss. One is circulation improvements, another is the operations, and the last is is one that's been a topic of conversation, which is the shared parking. I'll try to hit all the all the questions that Mr. Canjiano had also in my direct testimony. I'll I'll add some add some color. The site has been has been designed to accommodate all design vehicles, including passenger cars, delivery vehicles, refuse trucks, and the largest township emergency vehicle. The access is via a boulevard-type access to Parsippany Road, which allows for emergency access should one side need to be shut down for any for any reason. That that provides better circulation in the event of emergency. There are improvements associated with that boulevard-type access at the signalized intersection of the site driveway and Parsippany Road. We are working with the county to satisfy their needs, and we will satisfy their requirements for the upgrades to that signal. They identified several upgrades that they are requesting, and we will be accommodating them. In addition, we are extending the the sidewalk from the driveway north to the bridge over Route eighty. We did investigate investigate potential sidewalk to the south, to the south of the IBW building, but there's not really any, there is no right-of-way available for that improvement. So my next, my next discussion will be on operations. The site is currently occupied by over four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot office park, and that office park, if fully occupied, generates a significant amount of traffic, as you might imagine. The site, as proposed, will generate significantly less trips when compared to the office complex at full occupancy, on the order of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven less in the weekday morning peak hour, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight less during the weekday evening peak hour, and approximately thirty-four additional during the Saturday midday peak hour. As part of that, we did a comparative analysis for the three different time periods. The weekday morning, we found to be eight to nine AM, weekday evening, five to six PM, and the Saturday midday was eleven-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM. The counts were performed in October of last year, when schools were in session and when we weren't in the middle of this COVID. The level of service and delay at each of the study locations are comparable to a fully occupied office complex, and in most cases, less. The Littleton Road and Parsippany Road intersection will operate level service, overall level of service D or better during both conditions. The driveway and Parsippany Road intersection will operate an overall level of service B or better during both conditions. And the Allentown Road intersection with Parsippany Road will operate an overall level of service C or better during both conditions. So there's no significant impact to the adjacent roadway network as a result of the proposed development when compared to a fully occupied office park. My third topic is on the parking. And there's there's a couple of different factors with the parking. One is the townhomes. They have a whole separate area of parking. They provide one-hundred-and-ninety-four spaces, which is which exceeds their their required number of spaces for those townhome units. The remainder of the parking for the site is shared parking amongst the various multi-multi-use development, which includes the residential, the office, the retail, and the athletic field. We did a shared parking analysis of those thirteen-hundred-and-forty-five spaces and found that the the peak parking demand, which occurs during midday on a weekday, is approximately nine-hundred spaces, which there is an excess of four-hundred, four-hundred-plus spaces during that peak period. So there's there's sufficient parking to accommodate the anticipated demand. There are times during the day where if the office is fully occupied, if the residential is fully occupied, there may be some sharing between the two uses. So in the nighttime hours, when at nighttime and weekend, when the residents might need additional parking, they can park over in the office parking, located at building eight-hundred and nine-hundred. And subsequently, the office during the middle of the day, when there's significant parking available in the parking garages, can park in both the parking garages in building one and two. So there, it's it's synchronous between all of the uses, and parking will be made available if necessary. Now, one of the questions that was brought up was where is building seven-hundred parking? Primarily, there'll be parking in a lot near where building eight-hundred is. All of that area will be designated for office parking, but again, there is the ability for shared parking between either building two, building one. The the distance traveled, it's it's not a significant distance. We're talking about a couple of hundred, a couple of hundred feet in any given direction. And it's it's it's, we are providing pedestrian accommodations along the boulevard and along the the adjacent roadway network. The athletic field, as was testified to, we have increased the number of spaces dedicated to the athletic field. There are twenty-nine spaces in the immediate vicinity. In addition, there's another five spaces, five on-street spaces across from building one, for a total of thirty-four spaces localized to the athletic field. Again, there are plenty of spaces available when there are activities at the athletic field over at building eight-hundred, where there's where it's a relatively short walk. So all in all, there is significant. So all in all, there is significant a parking supply is designed to accommodate the anticipated demand for this use. And that concludes my direct, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lothian, I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay, Mr. Cagiano, any questions for this witness?
Yeah, just to follow up, and thanks for the testimony, just to follow up on the the shared component, and again, particularly building seven hundred. For the overall shared parking, I guess it is intended to utilize the the building one and building two parking. And I can't recall when we met back in March, if there was any discussion on assigned spaces for the residential. Are there going to be assigned parking spaces and has that been taken into account with the shared parking?
It's not anticipated that there will be assigned spaces. The the primary parking for seven hundred is is really, the office parking is around eight hundred and nine hundred. And the the supply around that area is anticipated to be enough to accommodate the office uses, but there will be the ability to park in the other other garages.
Yeah. My only concern is we've had recently several applications come in front of this board where the and fortunate that the applicant had come in for existing office use and they needed to expand their parking because of the internal configurations and uses of the office space. And they needed all the required parking and and more. We had a couple of applications where the modern day office use required all the parking and a little bit more. And and my concern is that we have that available if these buildings are fortunate enough to get fully occupied. And with the modern uses of the shared office space, they have seems to have more people in the building. When you have to use the parking deck, can you just talk a little bit more when you have the case, when you need to use the parking deck? It looks like there's a four hundred and forty-nine space shared requirement. That's in addition to the building nine hundred, eight hundred parking, that is that the 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 number that we're talking about sharing?
That's that's to meet the parking supply, the actual anticipated demand is significantly less than that for the office. And in addition, one thing I didn't mention is we did do a parking count on two separate days at the office, at the existing office buildings, and found that at any given time, the peak for for the entire park, the peak parking demand for all of the uses was three hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces in the in the midday peak hour. And that was for all of the existing tenants at the site.
And Mr. Lothian, when was that count undertaken?
That was done in December of twenty nineteen.
Mr. Cagiano, if I may, I was involved in a lot of those applications before the board.
Yes, that's right.
And that was all pre-COVID, so we don't know what the office layouts are going to be like, but I see I would suggest to the board, they're probably going to be a little different, at least for the foreseeable future.
Possibly, possibly. But could you just give a little bit more testimony on on the intended use of how they they'll circulate to the the parking decks? And and are the lower areas will be they, you know, assigned, or will they just have to circulate up through the through the parking decks? Like, what is the intended, when you hit that peak demand for when you get into these parking decks?
Again, there there will be no directly assigned spaces. For for the most part, anyone that's parked in the parking garages, you know, they'll be they'll be leaving throughout the course of the morning, and then there will be spaces available for the office users on those on those levels if if need be during the course of the day. But again, we anticipate that the office users will circulate over to the on-street, to the parking around the eight and nine hundred buildings before entering the garages.
And just one more on this topic, with building one, this may be better suited for the Mr. Minnow, the the architect. Access from building one parking deck, is there access to the southerly side? Or do they have to, how would one who's not a resident of the building go from the the parking deck to to building seven hundred or building eight hundred, for that matter?
Mr. Minnow, can you take that question?
Yes, that would have to be from the outside, it would, if someone was an office tenant using building one garage, they would have to walk outside along that entry road.
The one to the north?
Yes.
Okay, that's a pretty securest route for to get to the buildings, okay. Thank you. My other question was on the, just touching on the the trash pickup and circulation. Could you comment on the how the truck would maneuver, particularly to the building one? Would they be backing into that roadway, or is there provision for the truck to turn around at the end? I see there's a little bit of a turnaround area, could you comment a little bit on on that? I guess that's for the traffic, whoever wants to answer.
I think Alan could take that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there there is the provision to back it, pull pull into that that area to the right of the loading area and then back into the space. Subsequently, for building two, they'd be, they they could do either, they can they can back into that aisle where they can pull straight in and then back out.
All right, thank you, I I can't recall if you submitted the circulation plans on on that. Just as a matter of housekeeping, if if you haven't submitted those, you should submit the 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 garbage circulation template.
Very well.
That's all I have.
Ms. Vavate, anything to add?
Just a little further on the parking, so I think I heard your testimony, Mr. Lothian, that the garage for both of the buildings could be full at night. So in that case, residents could just park in the lot at eight hundred or nine hundred? So is it that the the garages are not sufficient to accommodate the all the residents of those buildings?
No, the garages are are designed to accommodate the anticipated demand for the residents. Signi, you know, by a significant part.
Okay. Okay, and then for the townhomes, the visitor parking is on the street, correct? I seem to recall that from March.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just a question on sidewalks, I'm looking at this site plan and I'm I'm seeing on the right side of where the townhouses are. It looks like the rear of those units that connect with the athletic field complex, but then it doesn't continue all the way to the the north-south road as it does on the other side. If you see what I'm I'm referring to, there's a continuous sidewalk on the left side of that that internal roadway, but not on the right side. Does that make sense?
Uh, I I actually see a continuous sidewalk on the right side of, are you talking about the parking area for the athletic field?
No, I'm talking about just the townhouses.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. So you're saying on the north side of the eastern townhomes?
Correct. Okay, I'm just, is it why they're treated differently? You can tell just from the way the landscaping is shown that they're different.
Yeah, I'm I I am not sure why that is shown that way. But there is connectivity throughout. So if you want to get to the athletic field, you can go north along that north-south connector and head around building seven hundred on the sidewalk. And it's essentially the same distance.
Is there any reason why we couldn't make the connection?
Well, you said that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is John, the.
Thank you, sir.
So so will we have revised plans to show that?
We will, we will make that modification.
Thank you.
Ms. Vavate, anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
One one second, Dominic.
That's it for me, thank you, Chairman.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Lothian, a question about building seven hundred. I believe there must be some handicap parking there now. Would that continue to exist? Because I couldn't see people walking from the lot at building eight hundred across the main thoroughfare.
We will, we will be sure to make ADA accessible spaces available.
At building seven hundred?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that question, where where will they be?
I'm sorry, who asked that?
That that's Board Attorney Scott Carlson.
Thank you, sir.
I will have to confer with our site engineer on that.
Okay, so that'll be shown on whatever resubmission there is to.
On the compliance plans, yes.
Ah, okay.
All right, Mr. Mealy, is that all for your question?
That was it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, any other board members with questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm I'm confused about the the parking and the access. I'm assuming there are elevators from the garage to the various floors in the buildings, is that correct?
Elevators to the different floors of the parking decks, Mr. Mandel.
Yeah, once you, one, once I park my vehicle halfway up and I'm I'm a resident on floor five, how do I get there?
You can enter.
There are elevators.
And you can enter directly into the building from that floor.
Now, what's to stop the office building people? Before the 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 statement was that they'd have to walk, what's to stop them from taking the elevator down and then walking out the front of the buildings?
They would be card keyed out of the of the residential elevator in the residential corridor.
Okay. That was basically the question, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mandel, any other board members with questions? All right, no, I I I actually had the same question as Mr. Mandel, it's concerned for the security of the residents with with the potential for people from the buildings going through the parking spaces. So we we will be using cards in the elevators or some other form of security there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's it's a mystery for Jerry. Just just thinking, and I might have missed this, but it was a good question that was raised regarding ADA spots for building seven hundred. Is it safe, have we affirmed that there are ADA spots for these other shared garages and also even for the for the townhomes?
Yes, that'll all be ADA compliant.
Yes. The garages show ADA spaces.
Okay, and the town and the townhomes also. I don't know how many would be required, but is there some provision for people who would be having a townhome residence if somebody needed an ADA spot? And where would it be, that's?
Yeah. The garages would be able to accept an ADA vehicle.
That is a question.
So I I I understand that, I I don't mean to belabor the point, but if there's a handicap person, they should have the ability to access their townhome without, you know, the journey from building two, for example.
Well, the the townhomes are all ADA accessible.
They are, that that was my question, Mr. O'Neil, I wasn't hearing that, so each, okay, all right.
By their design, they're all, so there's no designated ADA compliant townhome, all the townhomes get to be ADA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. A question for Mr. Lothian. You you testified that we had reviewed the different vehicles that could go through the the facility. Are there any areas that are or aren't accessible by, say, a tractor-trailer?
Well, a tractor-trailer isn't a designed vehicle here, the largest vehicle is actually the the largest emergency vehicle, but we don't anticipate any tractor-trailer deliveries.
Okay, so and anybody who received a delivery would would have to receive it in a van or some other vehicle?
Yeah, or a single unit, larger, single unit truck can fit there here, but.
Okay, so what's the largest size vehicle that we accounted for? And are there any places that that vehicle can't access?
Well, again, it's the largest emergency vehicle for the town, I'm not sure exactly what the wheelbase is.
It's one of the fire trucks, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Excuse me, I have a hard time, I'm only seeing like three people. If you can just say your name before you're talking, because when everybody, more than two people are talking at once, I don't know who it is. I only have the ability to see three of you or four of you.
All right.
Oh, Mr. Mr. O'Neil, I'm not even seeing you on the screen. Okay.
That was me.
Okay, this this is Chairman Von Aiken again. Mr. Lothian, you spoke about the comparative analysis of the current flow utilizing a fully occupied office park. This office park has not been fully occupied, yet we still have substantial traffic issues on Parsippany Road. Would this facility increase traffic against its current occupancy?
It it will increase against current occupancy, but but again, the site the site is entitled to a certain level of traffic generation. And actually, the trip generation that we're using, which is the tenth edition, is significantly lower than when this site was previously approved.
I understand that, thank you.
And let me let me just take let me just take a moment to remind the board that unfortunately, traffic generation is not within this board's consideration under the, it's it's now a classic case known as Dunkin' Donuts, that once a use is approved for a site, the planning board cannot take the number of trips generated to the site into consideration, or or better better put, they cannot take off-site traffic concerns into consideration. On-site traffic concerns and whether or not the site can 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 can, you know, withstand the traffic are well within the board's jurisdiction.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Carlson. My last question is, since the potential use of the parking garages by the office buildings exists, do we need to have better sidewalk and or paths for for foot traffic from those garages to the office buildings? It looks like building two is probably sufficient, but I'd be concerned about the the path of travel from building one.
Are you asking for a crosswalk, Mr. Chairman?
I believe that and a sidewalk along the the northern side of building one.
We can do those.
Thank you very much. Any other board members with questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Lothian, regarding the intersection at Parsippany Road. Now, if I'm correct, elementary school children whose school is just to the west of Parsippany Road would have to walk, because I don't believe the state provides busing unless it's two miles or more, is that correct?
It it, I think it it varies in depending on jurisdiction, I think there's there's some jurisdictions where it's one mile.
So I guess my question is, will Morris County, which is responsible for Parsippany? So I guess my question is, will Morris County, which is responsible for Parsippany Road, provide adequate protection for schoolchildren who need to cross to get over to their elementary school? Do you know?
I think, I think the, the walking path for the children going to the elementary school would be uh to the south to Allentown Road where there's adequate sidewalks.
Which, which makes more sense for the townhomes because they're closer to that intersection, true. Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, this is Andrew Canjiano. I had a follow-up to that, and it was regarding that, that the sidewalk, uh, that, that I guess you guys investigated, the sidewalk. Um, there is a sidewalk in front of the uh IBW building, and I think it stops there, and there is no sidewalk, but there's a a flat graded area in front of the Chase Bank, uh, the, the adjacent lot, and then the next lot uh to the south there approaching Allentown Road. Um, you had mentioned a right-of-way restriction. How much right-of-way i- is available? Because I, particularly the point of the schoolchildren and access to that shopping center, this would definitely be a main route for these people to access uh pedestrian, yeah, you know, travel that, down to that shopping center or the intersection. But wha- what kind of right-of-way is available of? For those two lots?
I don't recall off the top of my head. There wasn't enough uh to provide that sidewalk and, you know, we, we, we don't have the ability to go and uh, obtain that land across.
Yeah.
Two private properties.
And I couldn't scale it, but from the subdivision map, it did look to be uh, you know, like some distance off of the curb line. Um, I just asked that a little bit further investigation be done to uh, to s- uh, you know, to, 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 so we can see what, what the right-of-way width is there, and uh, maybe we can look at that a little bit closer to see if we can get, you know, say, a five-foot wide sidewalk or, or some, some sidewalk uh within the right-of-way uh, to go, to go across those two properties. The grades look very, very favorable for just adding a sidewalk there.
Well, Mr. Canjiano, I believe Mr. Lothian did investigate that, and uh, there just isn't sufficient uh width there at the Chase Bank and the Insurance Office. Unless, I don't know what map of Mr. Lothian looked at, but uh, if you just do a visual investigation, there's not enough room for sidewalks. Perhaps Chase Bank is parking in the right-of-way?
Um, I'm just looking at the subdivision plan. There, there appears to be some distance. I, 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 I couldn't say if it's two feet, three feet, five or six feet, just from the, uh, it's not, there's no dimension uh from the curb line.
Mr. Lothian, you took a look at that?
Yes, we, we, we did. Uh, and, you know, we, we can investigate it further with the, with the county in our, you know, design of the intersection, but again, they, they even acknowledged in their latest comment letter that there was not significant, there was not sufficient right-of-way available to put the sidewalks on.
If you can investigate it a little bit more, just maybe uh, even a small exhibit to see what's going on. Particularly if these kids do need to walk uh and get to Allentown Road, um, that, that is the route they need to take.
Not sure we're willing to accept that they have to walk to their schools. We, we anticipated school buses at this location, if necessary.
I'm just asking for it to be just looked at to see if there is a, the right-of-way available for a sidewalk.
And as we, as we know, the busing can be available today but gone tomorrow, that can change, and we have no control over that, so I would ask that Mr. Canjiano's um request be, be acknowledged.
We would like to work on that possibly as a condition of approval, seeing that the county's already taken the position that it can't be done.
Uh, all right, yeah.
We'll work with you directly.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I, I have a follow-up along a similar uh consideration. I, I, I would consider it perfectly possible that um, there might be some residential traffic, including the schoolchildren potentially going uh from the Park Boulevard to Parsippany entrance. Um, will we be accounting for um residential crossings on that road? Um, when we do the signal, uh modification and improvement?
We will be looking at putting in uh, putting in crosswalks where possible.
Okay, and, and uh, any other things for potential crossing safety, correct?
Yes.
Let you decide what that would be.
Yeah, the, the problem, the problem is on, again, i- it would be, it would be a crosswalk to nowhere because there's no sidewalks on the other side of uh Parsippany Road in that.
But there is a park, there is a park.
There, there is a park, and the school actually backs up to that area, so. Uh, it wouldn't be inconceivable to see people trying to walk through the back way.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying there's no sidewalk on that side of uh Parsippany Road. But we will, we will look to accommodate pedestrian crossing at that location.
All right.
Mr. O'Neil, just to be clear, given, given the number of exhibits that are being requested by board members, I'm, I'm not anticipating a vote tonight. Um, I'm anticipating that we'll have one more hearing to clear up these matters. Um, and it'll be limited to that. But uh, I, I'm, I'm anticipating we're coming back, so I'm, I'm that's, that's where I am, and uh, I'm not recording these as, as uh conditions that, that are approvable tonight.
Well, as Mr. Lothian indicated, the county's already taken the position that there's no sidewalk, no availability for sidewalks to the south.
Sure, sure.
We've also talked about uh.
We, we wouldn't mind seeing a, a letter as evidence of that, and, you know, the ability of crosswalks, plus we had this other matter of showing a new exhibit involving uh the internal circulation. And I believe there were other unanswered questions. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but it, it just seems to me that there's a lot of questions tonight that I, that, that need to be, need to be resolved.
There is an internal circulation exhibit. It is uh TM one-on-one.
Yeah, I thought we had provided that too.
Yeah, it's TM one-on-one uh vehicle circulation plan.
Okay.
And, and it shows the uh, shows the largest designed vehicle circulating through the site.
And there were concerns about the handicap parking near building seven hundred that I think need to be provided.
I think we, we agreed we would provide ADA accessible spaces.
Well, I, 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 I get that, but I think the board members want to see where that's gonna be. And how that's gonna be provided. That was, that's what my notes reflect at least.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Millie here.
Uh, Mr. Carlson, are you, are you done?
I, sure, sure.
Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Millie.
Could someone make a motion requesting an adjournment of this meeting until such time as these answers to these questions are provided at a subsequent meeting?
Uh, I think that, that might be appropriate, uh, except that I'm, I would want to make sure that Mr. O'Neil is finished with uh any other witnesses that he would want to have for today.
And, and, and to be clear, I think we should continue with tonight's testimony, but we've just got some questions that require answering um through, you know, documentary evidence in the future. So, you know, I would suggest we continue with tonight's hearing and let, let, let the witnesses um continue with whatever they're prepared to provide. There might be additional questions that arise as a result of that, so I think we should continue. And then either allow public, public questioning of these witnesses or adjourn until such time as their testimony complete.
Mr. Chairman, Bruce.
Uh, one, one sec, Mr. Fageri. Uh, Mr. Millie, how do you feel about uh our, our attorney's suggestion? Do you agree?
What was the suggestion? I'm sorry.
To, to allow the test. And if we.
The testimony, yes, I'm sorry. The testimony should continue.
All right, very good. I, I agree with that. Mr. Fageri, go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm hoping this is the right spot for this, but, but it, it was my understanding as well and to go, I, I understand that there, there's other factors involved with getting these children and, and people walking across Parsippany Road uh for school. But uh, you know, uh, East Lake School is well within a mile of this location, unless you, I, I don't know how you could possibly measure it that it's not. And um, so I'm not sure buses are, I, I don't know how that's gonna work. Um, and um, I just would like to know that we're gonna explore this. I, I, I don't know what the mechanism would be. Maybe Mr. Canjiano will take care of this and we'll have good news then down the road. But how, how, I, I, I don't, I mean, that's a lot of kids. And that road in the morning, I'm unfortunately on it every once in a while, not as much as I used to be. And um, it's, it's an issue. Um, and blaming the county doesn't help the children or the families.
Yeah.
But in the county for what?
If I may, Mr. Fageri raises a great point in that
we, we have no testimony on the record that the Board of Ed is going to provide busing to, to the children that are part of this facility. Um, with, at, at risk of testifying, I can tell you that, you know, as a Parsippany resident, my kids were bused until they weren't bused, and then they started being bused again. Um, so that's plainly something that changes from year to year. We have, we have, we have no reason to believe that these children will be bused. Um, so I leave that to the board.
Chairman? Judy Hernandez?
All right, Judy Hernandez, you're recognized.
Yeah, it's, it's less than two miles. The, the town won't. The, these kids are gonna have to walk. My kids were right on two oh two and they had to walk. Um, and streets with no sidewalks, and we were 1.99 miles from the schools. So we've got to figure this out. I agree.
All right, a- and I think that the point about the, the chance that the children will likely be, be walking or, or at least could be walking is something that ought to be considered by this plan. Uh, a- and uh should be um uh, should be accounted for uh here um to the board's satisfaction. Mr. O'Neil?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, once, one second, Mr. Mandel.
One second.
Mr. O'Neil, or does that make sense to you? Are you aligned with that?
Are you aligned with that?
That's an issue we'll need to explore.
Okay, then when we'll expect that in uh, in, I guess, potential future testimony. Uh, Mr. Mandel, you had a question?
I have more of a, it's a question for our professional people. What would it take to build sidewalks across the Chase Bank and the insurance company?
Oh, uh, just Andrew Canjiano. I, I, yeah, looking at that, it's um, it's a very, like I said, the, the, the grades are very flat there. It's a question of getting, in my opinion, uh, uh, getting some more detailed existing condition information out there and really seeing uh, just uh, you know, uh, submitting that and, and uh, we'll take a closer look at that to see if there is in fact some, some space available to get a sidewalk uh in front of the, the Chase Bank property um i- in, within the catty rightway. And also, there may need to be a discussion with the county on that, but uh, there is some, I mean, looking at the subdivision map, um, it doesn't, it looks like it's uh property lines uh overlaid on aerial uh uh curb line, so it's not, I think additional existing condition information over there would be very valuable and, and assessing if we can fit a sidewalk in within the right-of-way.
Andrew, could, could they get an easement from Chase, just the?
Well, I mean, uh, that, that's a different story. This isn't their property, so they don't have any hand in, in, in requesting an easement from, from Chase, but um, I mean, that's a different story, but I, I think we first look at the, what, what's available within the right-of-way.
Yeah, uh, uh, legally, you know, um, that property is not part of this board's jurisdiction tonight, or as part of this application, so we really can't consider it. We can consider whether or not uh, traffic both, both, both vehicle and pedestrian can move on and off of the site safely. And if you find that it cannot, you have, you, you have reason to have your doubts, but um that, that property is not part of our jurisdiction tonight, and we can't ask them to acquire it or any interest in it.
I've had an opportunity to confer with my client on this question, if I may. And uh, my client has directed me to offer a shuttle to, to take the kids from the site to the schools wherever they may be operated by the owner. And my client has also authorized me to indicate that handicap parking will be provided in the spaces along the uh Lanedex Boulevard to the immediate north of building seven hundred.
That's rather unorthodox, Mr. O'Neil. I'll need to consider um, the provision of shuttles in particular. Um, I've never seen. Al- although the offer your client should know is, is much appreciated.
Okay, um, I believe at this moment, I had, I had uh suggested that we would take a five-minute recess at nine o'clock. I think this is the best time for that. Um, but I do want to keep this limited to, to five minutes, so take care of the things you need to. Um, get back here at nine thirty, and Mr. O'Neil, you'll be able to present your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, five-minute recess. All right, let's get everybody back. I have 9:30 on my clock. All right. I see our board is back. Ms. Hernandez, Mr. Fugieri. People are moving around on me. Mr. Mandel, Mr. Dinsmore, and Dominic, are you there?
For my part, I am quite here, Mr. Chairman.
I will have to all make do with that. All right, Mr. Mealy, are you back?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. The board is back. Mr. O'Neil, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, I'd like to recall Mr. Miola.
And for my part, I will note the board is going back on record at 9:31 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Miola.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good, yeah.
Just, just to clarify, the ADA parking location for Building 700. The east-west spine road known as Park Boulevard. Directly to the northeast of Building 700, there are, are five proposed parallel spaces. Right along that, that spine road, pretty close to Building 700. Those five spaces could be converted pretty easily to ADA parking spaces.
Mr. Miola, I, I don't see a north arrow on this map. Is north directly up?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct, so, yes, they're, they're really opposite that, that roundabout that is directly next to Building 1. There are five parallel spaces which we can. Take ADA accessible by, by widening the depth of the space and the depth of the indent off the road. And so they would become five parallel ADA spaces to specifically service Building 700.
Are those places, they look rather far from Building 700. Are, are those. Within the bounds of ADA compatible? I mean, there seems to be a roadway in between.
There's no roadway in between, so these are, it's, it's on, they're located off the, the south side of Park Boulevard. I'm not sure if I can control this, or if we can zoom in, so I can, I can.
Mr. Carlson, I think he's referring to opposite Building 1. Along the road that moves towards the athletic field.
Mr. Miola, you know, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think we're gonna ask you to submit an exhibit that shows this.
Thank you, just as it was circled on the exhibit. While you were speaking, Mr. Carlson, that, that was the area I was indicating.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is Andrew Canjiano again, and the accessible access to the building is on the east or on the west? The building number 700, that is.
I will have to check that, Mr. Canjiano. If you, if you give me a minute, I will look at, look at my survey.
Again, we're not going to resolve this tonight. Please put together a handicapped accessibility. Exhibit.
Makes sense.
If my witness can refer to the exhibits that we've provided here, he can answer these questions.
Right, right, but I, you're, you're, you're asking the board to basically do mental gymnastics at this point, so.
We're, we're, we're asking to show the board.
Your witness.
So. The ADA entrance to Building 700 is the west side of the building. There are steps on the east side, so there would need to be an ADA ramp. Installed on the east side of 700. Or the ADA. People that are, that are parking in those spaces would have to walk or walk around to the, the west side of Building 700 to access that building.
Mr. Miola, can you put together a plan that shows this?
Yeah, I, I concur, I concur with Mr. Carlson. And, and also, can you verify that these spaces would be ADA van accessible, any of them?
Yes, I say we would have the required amount of ADA van accessible spaces as well as standard ADA spaces. And yes, a, a plan could be provided. Indicating all this for the, the board and the board's professionals review and approval.
Yeah, I, I feel that it's going to be necessary. I, I was anxious to see if we could get an approval, but. You know, I, I think if we put some good thought to this, we may have decisions about, do we want these to be parallel parked along the side there? Do we want them to be head-in parked along the side? Do we have enough distance between the, the parking spaces and a roadway for compliance? We've only discovered that we need, we'll probably need a ramp on the 700 building. I, I think this needs a little bit more thought. So, yes, please present a plan. Okay. Mr. O'Neil?
I have no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Whoa, let's see, now I gotta remember what happens next, right?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I had a couple of questions for the landscape architect, and I know he's here.
Oh, very good.
If I, if I. Um, I noticed one of the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm just, I'm just jumping in, I'll, I'll put.
The attorney's gotta slow it all down. Sir, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Jason Tronco, T R O N C O. Sorry.
Have you been qualified by this board with respect to these proceedings?
Yes, I have.
Your witness, Miss.
Thank you. Just a couple, I noticed one of the comments from the fire district was regarding landscaping, and, and they had some concerns about. You know, trees potentially keeping some of their operations, and I just didn't know if you had gotten a chance to look at that and whether any changes had been made in response to that letter.
Yeah, we haven't made any changes, but all the trees are back from curb lines, significant distance to allow. Fired apparatus to navigate the roadways.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other question was on the, the retaining walls that appeared where they are over six feet. Can you comment on how that affects landscaping in those areas? It's, it's sort of hard to visualize without knowing exactly where those tiered walls are proposed.
Sure, most of those areas are just lawn areas. They're in areas that, that don't have landscaping. So the tiering wouldn't affect landscaping. It would be ground cover seeded lawn that would, would step with the walls.
Did they have a sub on the IDW building? Is that true, Mr. Tronco?
Ah, yes.
And, and there will be, need to be some additional landscaping in the tiered area, correct, in accordance with the regulations?
That could be added, sure.
Okay. And then lastly, just, just to confirm again, these areas that are shown on this plan in front of us in green. For example, just east of Building 2. That's just going to be lawn, is that correct? In the short and long term, I guess?
Yes, that'd be a seeded lawn, turf grass. Our intention is not to have it, you know, be mowed every two weeks. It would be more of a tall fescue mix. That could be seasonally mixed, seasonally cut, but once or twice a season. So it could grow a little taller and minimize maintenance.
And is there a reason why there was no additional landscaping proposed in these areas?
Well, that area was something we were, at the last meeting, discussed as part of, being part of future development. We have a development pending with this board, where we'll be having that discussion.
Yeah, that's correct. I, I guess what I'm getting at is, we don't know when that future development may occur and how many years out. In the meantime, I, I don't know if anyone in the board is interested in some landscaping there beyond grass.
Got a question for us or for the board?
I, I guess it was a question generally. It sounded like I'm not getting any takers. Anybody on the board feel, feel strongly one way or another about landscaping in these areas?
How about picnic tables and barbecue pits?
I feel strongly about not having like just a flat green mowed area. So the grasses and something like that with maybe some native plants are, I think, a, a good idea. I mean, that does take maintenance too, a little bit, but some, some natural native gardens, I mean, we're. Where they can be left. And you have a lot of natives here in your, in your plan as the. I remember from last time.
True.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, in a way with, they're describing it, Judy, it sounds like we'll probably get some wildflowers mixed in there. Mix some milkweed, some butterfly garden aspects.
Well, he was going, he, he was talking about having a mix of grasses, so they wouldn't be mowing at all times, so just, you know, go a little further, yeah. As long as it doesn't, you know, it's visually appealing. It has potential.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Tronco. Are we still using the black gum trees that you testified to last time?
Oh, yes. Nessus savatica, the black gum or tupelo, yes, I'm sure we're still, we have them on the plan.
I'm actually very excited about those. That seems nice. And they, they are, they are relatively winter resistant, right?
Yep, that's a major shade tree, native major shade tree.
Very good, very good. All right, any other board members with, with questions for any of the witnesses at this time? All right, well then, at this time, I, I guess it's appropriate that we turn it over for. Public questions, and I'd just like to emphasize, you know, a question is meant to. Resolve any empty areas in, in the testimony that you don't feel were adequately explained. Not to tell us what you think of the development, but rather just to make sure you're getting extra information from the witnesses that testified, so.
And to be clear, and to be clear, Mr. Chairman, there will be a full public comment period after public questioning is done.
That is correct. So Nora, how would we go about. Opening up the public question portion?
This is Earl. I'm gonna field that. What I want to do is give. Some instructions to the attendees. On how to raise their hand. If you move your mouse across your screen, you will see. Six dots that light up at the bottom. Going from left to right, count over four. And if you click on that, you can turn on a list that's gonna show the attendees. Once that list is lit up, in the lower right-hand side, there's a hand. An icon of a hand. If you press that, it will raise your hand to be called upon. And I also ask that when you're done speaking, that you turn it off, because we, we can't turn it off and it'll just stay up, so. That's the way it's done, and if you do that, we will see a hand go up and we can claw on you. Thank you.
Okay, I see.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if I can just, if I can just ask a question. Mr. Hopker, who are you and what is your relationship to the board?
No relationship to the board, I'm IT.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Earl, do we have any, any questions from the public?
I see a hand up by a. Teru King, Mr. or Mrs. King, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Okay. After tonight's discussion, what is the plan for, I guess, open discussion with the public? Because I, I know that the time's gonna be limited this evening. When, when will there be a more formal setting for discussions with the public? I don't believe that's a question for any of the witnesses that.
If, if, if I may, that's a procedural question. So this is the opportunity to question. The, the professionals that have provided testimony tonight.
Okay, well then, I, but I, I, I still do have a question in regards to.
If you have a question for one of the professionals, this is the time for that. When this period closes, there will be, be a period for public comment where you can say anything you like with respect to the applicant.
Understood, okay. So my concern is in terms of traffic and the traffic studies that was done. For me, having lived here for 15 years, I've never known traffic to stop at nine o'clock and, and around six on a regular basis. It usually goes a lot longer. And I, while I understand that the jurisdiction is limited to the traffic inside this project. This isn't a, a retirement community. These people are gonna be moving in and out just as long, just as much as you guys were. Expressing concern about children getting to and from school. People that live in this area are going to have to move, so I'm just curious as to why. Why there isn't as much concern, even though it is a jurisdiction limitation. The people who live here have to move in and out. And, and I'm just curious as to why, why there isn't more planning put into it.
If, if, if I may interject on that, legally speaking. You know, this, this use, this density, et cetera. you know, this, this use, this density, et cetera, has already been approved by the township council. And therefore, the planning board has no jurisdiction over whether or not this use and density, et cetera, is appropriate for the site. It's already been approved. So, you know, if there was a concern about, and the case law, unfortunately, which, which controls what the board can and cannot do is clear on this, that off-site traffic considerations cannot be considered by a planning board.
Okay.
So that's why this proceeding is limited to the onsite conditions and whether or not what's being, what's happening onsite is appropriate or not.
Okay, because with, with the amount of time that has passed between when this has come up and now the months because of everything that's going on with COVID, it has been difficult to keep track of everything. And while you're saying that everything has been passed already, it's been difficult to get information in terms of deapprovals and such, because to my knowledge.
I don't want to cut you off, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but, you know, this was all done long pre-COVID. This goes back a couple of years.
Okay. Okay.
And I totally sympathize with you on the COVID thing. Believe me, we're all struggling to try to keep up during COVID. But this was, this was done back in 2018.
Yeah, this was done as part of the township's affordable housing and fair share plan in terms of the use, the density of those parameters. Excuse me, this is Susan, the body, sorry. In terms of any approvals that had happened during COVID, the board has not considered this application at all since March. So you haven't missed anything from this board.
Okay. So if with, within not being your jurisdiction, the appropriate place to ask questions or to find out, is there any recommendation on where to go?
Well.
Or is it something where, you know, there's nothing else that can be said because it's approved? Like, is that the general consensus?
I hate to be, I'm going to be straight. I'll be honest with you. This is unapproved use at an approved density. And the, the site plan that we're being presented with is fully compliant with zoning. Now, the planning board can change, you know, things like that we're discussing, for example, access throughout the site. Whether or not schoolchildren will be able to properly get on and off the site. These are, these are perfectly acceptable things for the board to consider. But whether or not this should or should not be approved, strike that. Whether or not this is a good use of the site or not a good use of the site is not up for deliberation at this level.
Well, no, not looking to deliberate, but at least looking to get some insight. And because the jurisdiction isn't here, I'm just curious as to where residents can go.
You know, the big event already happened, which was that this site was approved as part of our affordable housing plan. And the zoning was changed to permit it. So that event has already occurred. And we're simply here to look at the particulars of the site and decide whether the particulars work or they don't, if that helps.
With the athletic field that's there, is, is there any plan in terms of it being used for public events, I guess, outside residents making use of it, like for larger events essentially?
I'll turn that to the applicant.
I actually have the answer to that. The, according to the recreation department, athletic fields that are privately owned are not used for municipal events.
And if residents there wanted to use it for larger events, would that be possible or permissible?
If residents there wanted to use it, of course it's permissible.
Okay. All right. I was just curious, only because with the parking that's adjacent to it, it seems like it wouldn't hold that many people, or at least allow for that many visitors to the location. But I mean, at this point, I'll lower my hand and leave it at that. But thank you for your time.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, Mr. Teru, you did a very good job. But we do want to try to keep these, the questions of the witnesses and save the comments for the next section where there will be adequate time. All right. Do we have any other questions?
I see Marcy Phelps' hand up. Do you hear me, Mrs. Phelps?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
How is everybody tonight?
I'm doing good, Marcy. Thank you.
Good. Do I have to spell my name and go through all that also, or? No? Are you there?
Mr. Chairman, I am not of the school of legal thought that requires public comment to be sworn.
Okay.
You do not need to spell your name, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I just have a couple of general questions regarding the plan itself. The athletic field, how high is the fencing going to be? Is there going to be netting going up above to protect, just say baseballs flying out of there if there's kids playing, something going on that's going to protect us residents? That athletic field is directly in back of my house and they have driven golf balls years ago on the side of Route 80 across that have broken windows in my house. So I'm just curious how high that fencing is going to be.
I'm sorry, ma'am. You live where?
I am 84 Alexander. I'm right next to the dead end street. So that athletic field is pretty much in my backyard. No?
No, it's kind of, they're separating you in a.
Right. Yeah, I understand that, but is there going to be extra fencing going up above that? Or is it going to be a flat out six or eight foot fence going around?
Mr. Myola, is there any fencing proposed for the field?
Yes. Excuse me, I just.
Spot that?
Yes. So there is a combination of two different heights of fence. On the, on the west side and the south side, there's four foot high fence. And towards the east side and the eastern side, there's 10 foot high fence. What's proposed around that field.
Okay. The other thing I would like to address is the clubhouse. I know when we had looked at plans and went to the few meetings, they had talked about fire pits being in there. Is, is that something that's, that you guys are working on planning? Or is that something that may be considered being added later on as far as the whole clubhouse setup?
Are you asking if the plan we showed you at the last meeting is the plan for the clubhouse yard? Is that what you're asking?
Within the yard, yes. They talked about having fire pits in there, picnic tables. You know, my concern about that is fire pits brings obviously smell, which we all have fires in our backyard once in a while. But depending on hours of the clubhouse, whoever mandates what hours are going to be over, that, that means loud noise and that means alcohol. So I'm just curious if, who mandates the hours that that clubhouse is going to be open when they can access it?
Does anyone have to answer to that question regarding the hours of the operation of the clubhouse? Well, we will comply with the noise requirements here in town, and I believe that noise levels have to change at 10 o'clock. We will comply with all the local noise regulations regarding that. And regarding smells, I'm not sure what the question is.
Yeah, no, as I said, a fire pit going all hours of the day, like you said, that fire, depending on wind, is going to generate. But, you know, I have a fire pit, so that's fine, too. I had another question about plowing in the winter months. Can one of the experts address that question?
Yes.
Okay. We have had ongoing problems when Lanidex was functioning, which has been 15 years since there's been anybody over there. They would start plowing all night long, 11 o'clock, all night long, banging, dropping, plowing. And a handful of times they called the police and I was told it's a commercial area. There is nothing that they can do. And I was just curious, since there are residential in there, is that a complaint? Like I said, if I hear this going on all hours of the night and I call the police, can they address the noise level? Or is that something that they're going to say to me, well, this is commercial, you know, it is commercial and residential? How does that fall in there?
Well, I think though, it's necessary, to my knowledge, snow plowing is not governed by noise regulations. That's an emergency activity. Unless someone has something to add to that.
That is true, but not all hours of the night. You know what I'm saying? It's, I've lived here for 22 years. You know, there's no, barely a dusting out there and all night long, all night long, all night long. If they have to plow people out over there with this, that is going to go on. So you're telling me that there's nothing as a resident over here that we can do anything about that that goes on? I just have to suck it up and listen to it and get up and go to work the next day.
Well, you're going to listen to it when they're doing it in front of your house and you're going to listen to it.
It's much different. It is much, no, it's much different. They might go up and down the road once in a while to remove the snow. That is not what it is like in that corporate park setup, you know, it's.
Well, I don't know if you can see the screen, but the giant parking lot that was in your backyard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's going to be townhouses. It's wonderful. I just love it.
Yeah, speak one at a time. One at a time, please.
One at a time, please. I had one more question. I'm just trying to think of, I had a question for the, the traffic expert.
Yes.
He commented about doing a traffic count in October. What October was he speaking of? 2019?
Yes.
Okay. I've lived here 22 years. Lanidex has not been filled at all in 15, 16, 17 years. So whatever count was done in October is not going to be accurate by any means in comparing the volume of people that are going to come out of this mega city. And that's the nickname we've given it, mega city. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate. Have a great evening.
Okay, so I see Joseph Pelletini, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Paul Tini, but thank you for taking my question. I'll be brief. So again, mine revolves around safety and this may not be a question for the, the planning board. But since building two will be kind of like ongoing construction, even after the townhomes are complete, just what safety measures will be in place for people that will need to walk around Park Boulevard to get to Parsippany Road while it's an active construction zone? Will there be any additional safety measures there? Like say, schoolchildren trying to get up to Parsippany Road. And again, I'm not sure if this is the right place for that.
So that's a good question. This is Dan Myola, the civil engineer. We will have the construction zones for the buildings cordoned off from the, the rest of the site that is to remain active, in particular for the office that is remaining. It'll, it'll be cordoned off with a, with a construction fence. Really just to separate, separate the construction zone from the, the rest of the site that'll be utilized by the office employees.
Okay, I was thinking more of the townhome residents trying to like say, walk around that to get up to Parsippany Road.
Oh, so, yes, you know, similar, you know, to the, to the other comparison I gave. You know, the, the, there will be a construction fence around, say, say, building two, which will really, you know, kind of encapsulate all the, all the construction, you know, vehicles and access. Whereas the, the rest of the site, the sidewalks, you know, the boulevard by that point will, will be built. So that there will be a pathway from the townhomes out that will be provided so that they're separated from the construction zones.
Okay. Again, I'm just thinking of the children, like say, would have to cross Park Boulevard in the morning and that would be the heavy traffic time for the people coming in to work. And that might be a little like congestion between the pedestrians and the traffic there. But that's all I was kind of thinking of. And then, and then would there be a sidewalk, like connecting IEBW building down into the complex on that side of the road?
No, that is, that is not proposed this time. The sidewalk going up Parsip, to Parsippany Road is on the opposite side as IBW.
Okay, all right.
To, to, to the speaker's point, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, sir. But, but I'd like to add that we'd really like to see an exhibit that's going to show how students will, will access the schools. And now, you know, the speaker raises a great question. How will they do it during construction? So we'd like to see all that. And please, you know, bear in, bear in mind that, you know, this area might not be served by, by bus. There, and there's certainly no guarantee that it will in the future.
I apologize, Mr. Carlson. I was supposed to relay a shuttle bus offer.
And I heard that and I'm glad for that. And, and I appreciate your client's offer of that. But I'm not even sure the legality of that. You know, particularly under a COVID-19 circumstance. You know, I think there's got to be, and this is me, and I'm, I'm not a member of the board. But I think there's got to be a provision that these children will be able to walk to school. Because I don't think there's any guarantee that, you know, legal sufficient transportation will be in place for them.
Well, we've got the, we're doing traffic improvements as part of the county to put in crosswalks and signalization.
I understand that.
We're getting the kids to Parsippany Road. We're getting them across Parsippany.
I understand that. I just think you need to show that in a bit more detail.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, with, with respect, with respect to Mr. O'Neill's offer about a shuttle bus, could it be confirmed that the school just would accept that?
I have no idea.
And as a valid form of transportation for the students, I have no idea.
I, this is the first I've ever heard of private transportation being offered, and I appreciate the offer as I'm sure the board members did. But I'm just not sure that's legal or enforceable or what that even looks like under a COVID-19 scenario.
And God bless us. We're going to be talking about COVID-19 in 2022 when this is opened up.
I, I, you know, I think if I can editorialize, I think we would do well to plan for the next pandemic.
So we've indicated before, we're, we're getting the kids all the way across Parsippany Road into the park. So what detail are you looking for?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman? Bruce Fageri.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe throw in since I was part of the initial question with this. I think the issue is just getting them across Parsippany Road. Is, is there sidewalk on the other side to go south on? We know that there's issues with having sidewalk on the, I guess it would be the east side heading south to cross at the Allentown Light. We're, you know, we're trying to make sure that these kids have the option. And frankly, the residents are going to much prefer these kids to walk than to have their parents drive. have the option. And frankly, the residents are going to much prefer these kids to walk than to have their parents driving them and, and, and having more cars on Allentown Road and the side roads feeding it to Eastlake School. So I think that's what we're asking for. I don't think right now, from what I'm hearing, and this is just me, and I'm relatively new at this, that we have the answers. And I think that's what, what, what Mr. Carlson is, is getting at as well. The answers may be readily available to us and it may all be good. But we don't know. And, and our, our, our board engineers notion of sidewalk, I'm a longtime customer of Chase Bank. That's a lot of grass there. That's a lot of grass there. How could, maybe there, we don't know. Maybe they'll cooperate when they realize that they may even get foot traffic coming to the bank as a result of a little extra sidewalk. We just don't know. So we can commit to this. We will work with the county to put sidewalks there. If the county thinks sidewalks can go, we'll do it. That's just as plain as we can put it.
Well, how about we ask that question before we proceed?
About we what?
How about we ask that question of the county first? To find out what we're dealing with here.
We've already testified that we asked the county that question and they said no.
So, so.
We're going to ask again and we'll work with them if they say yes, if they change their minds. But they said no, Mr. Carlson. We don't control the county. We don't control the Chase Bank. We don't control the rest of the properties.
Okay, Mr. O'Neill. Thank you.
I just have a comment on that. If there is right of way available and the municipality or the applicant wants to put sidewalk in the county right away, I think that's, that's the question we should be asking the county. Not if the county wants to put in sidewalk. So again, I asked that we take a closer look in that area there if there's some space available to take a closer look at that. And as part of this project, the sidewalk go in the county right away if in fact there is space available.
Sure. And certainly the township could send a letter in support of that idea.
We would support that idea, too.
All right.
And I just wanted to add, it's Andrew Canjano again. To Mr. Carlson's point about, I just took a look at the phasing plan. According to the layout of the phasing plan for phase two, the sidewalk pedestrian route from the townhomes and the southern side there would be blocked off by the, the construction of building two. So, so it does make sense of Mr. Carlton asked, Carlson asked to, to provide some additional pedestrian route information during the, the phase two operation.
Yeah, I, and I think we need to assume that all these kids will be proceeding by foot to school. We have nothing on the record that says that they're going to proceed by bus. We have testimony that buses can navigate, but there's no testimony that's going to ensure that they're going to have bus routes.
And to add to that, Mr. Carlson, I believe the Board of Education would tell us that there are special requirements for who is allowed to shuttle or bus students to school. And I'm not sure that's something that we would be able to accept from, from the applicant at this time.
Right.
I just want to be clear that we're answering the question. When you're asking, you're asking us for the, the plan to have the kids walk through the site.
We, we want a plan that shows that the children that live on the site can actually access the public schools by foot.
That's what I don't understand. You want me to, you want me to provide a survey for Lanedex West to the school?
I, I, I suppose so.
I'm not going to do that.
Or, or, or that, or that, or proof that there, there will be vehicle. There will be busing from, from, from the site to the schools. Or, or some other proof that says that somehow these kids are going to get from the site to the schools.
So you want me to provide, you want the applicant to provide a plan for the kids to walk to the school or in the alternative? A commitment from the school? Because you won't accept our commitment. A commitment from the school that they'll bust them?
Right now, I have nothing that says these kids can access the site to the road that leads them to the schools. And site access is obviously within the board purview. And nothing tells me that they can access the, the entrances and exits to the site and get to school.
But we are providing our, our, you know, along our frontage, we're providing what we can for pedestrian connection. So our, our connection for pedestrians extends to the I B W building sidewalk across their frontage. And, you know, again, we've investigated further south. The county agreed that it wasn't, that it wasn't feasible. Now physically, could it be, could it be feasible out there with, with the flight? There's, there's the possibility, but with no right of way, it's not as feasible as it might seem. But we are connecting to the to the pedestrian network. And again, we're also providing that sidewalk to the north as another connection. I know that's not towards the school, but it does promote the pedestrian flow through the area.
So how, how does a kid get from here to Eastview School? Tell me. I'm sorry, Eastlake.
He walks across Parsippany Road down past the, down past the buildings up there, down that road into the back of the school. We had a board member talk about.
Can you tell me, can, can you tell me what's involved in that?
Can I tell you what's involved with that? Is that where you're trying to get to the core of your question, Mr. Carlson?
No.
You want the distance?
Core, my question is, I think he's crossing at an unsignalized intersection across the busiest road in Parsippany. Am I wrong?
You're wrong because we're, we've already testified that the signals are going to be improved there as per the county plan. We've crossed while taking control for crossing. And it's not the busiest road in Parsippany, by the way.
Well, I'm sure Route 46 is. And then where?
Down the road, do you have it up on the screen right now?
Yep.
You go down the road immediately across from Parsippany Boulevard, which is the entrance to Lanedex West.
Yeah.
Lanedex West into the back of the ball fields where the school is. It's right there.
Under sidewalk there?
There's a fence there.
Any idea?
Between Lanedex and the school, right? I live right there behind the school.
Who's speaking?
I'm sorry, it's Joseph Politini, the original question.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a, there's a metal fence between the school and the Lanedex Plaza.
Between what school?
Between Eastlake School and Lanedex.
Come on, we're, we're nowhere near Eastlake. We've crossed the street on the Parsippany Road.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he said Lanedex West. I'm sorry.
We've crossed the street. Apparently, for some reason, we've crossed Parsippany Road. I don't know why.
You're going to the school. You want them to walk to school, right?
Yes, and where's the school?
Behind Parsip- behind Lanedex West, going to the west.
So how they, how are they going from there?
How are they? That's the question you want us to ask, answer?
Yes.
All right.
This is Andrew Canjano again. Again, I, I'm looking at that survey. There, there appears to be some right of way there, six, six or seven, five, six or seven feet of right of way. Again, as an alternate route to, to get the students to, or people to the intersection of Allentown Road, that again, I, we, I'm asking for some additional exhibit in that area or detail in that area to see if, if a sidewalk can be built in addition to this other Lanedex West route, if that's feasible.
Fair enough.
Yeah, if, if, if I could add to that, it's Susan Calati. I think what we're looking for, just to recap, I think it's, it's a closer examination in conjunction with Andrew Canjano and his office of the sidewalk to the, to somehow get to Allentown Road. It's a safe crossing across Parsippany Road, understanding that you can roll across the street, but, but a sense of what happens to when kids do cross, how they access the school. And then on the site itself, how, what is the path for pedestrian schoolchildren or anyone trying to get up to Parsippany Road through the site in both phases during construction and, and fun completion?
That was very well stated, Susan. Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Do you want me to provide that pathway across the neighboring property? To delineate it?
We're just looking for you to, to take a look at it. I mean, I, speaking for myself, I, I'm not asking for you to build a sidewalk on someone else's property that you don't. I think, no one is expecting that, I don't think. But it's, you know, what, what is the situation when the children cross the road? What, what do they encounter? Can they, can they even get to the school from Lanedex West? Is there, I think none of us really knows that for sure.
No, I'm trying to delineate the question so my witnesses can answer the question. Because we would, we would hope to have a quick turnaround for the next hearing. And we want to provide this information to you very quickly. So that's why I'm looking for the clarity. Not trying to be argumentative, but just trying to be clear.
Well, I could add, I mean, a 20 scale exhibit of the existing conditions with if, if, and if the existing conditions, the width between the curb and the right of way. And if, if there's sufficient space to sketch in a sidewalk along the frontage of the lot that Chase Bank is on and the, and the lot south of that, that Allentown Road is on. And just a quick look down Allentown Road, that is, appears to be sidewalk the whole way down toward the school. So it's, it's a matter of, of going from the I B W building to the traffic light at Allentown Road. I don't know if that gives you some more better direction.
Thank you.
So that takes care of the portion which was discussed for the off-site concerns of access. But then there's also the concern, Mr. O'Neill, about pedestrian flow of, of, of any of the residents throughout the different phases in order to avoid potential safety concerns.
So the question is getting the kids past building two while it's under construction?
Correct.
Right, okay. I think we got that, yes.
Okay.
And then the other question is converting the parking spaces to the north of Building 700 into man-accessible handicap parking spaces.
Yes, that was one of the other requests.
Well, I'll rephrase that request to, to, to provide a sensible location for ADA parking in accordance with the ADA standards for Building 700. It may or may not be at that location.
It's going to be at that location. They've already looked at it. So we'll provide the detail.
Fair enough. Okay, we were in a public question portion, so I'd like to return to the public at this point. Nora, who do we have next?
Is Mr. Pelletini finished?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I didn't mean to go so long. I'm sorry.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your question.
Okay, we have two more. Our next one is Iva Poner. Iva, are you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So my question is, I'm looking at the location of, of the athletic field, which is few feet from the most congested area in Parsippany. Was there any air pollution study done to see what are the levels when kids at four o'clock in the afternoon actually go there and play? Is this suitable place for children to play right next to a major interchange and highway that is a track route and bumper to bumper traffic every day?
The answer is no test has been done and yes, we feel it is appropriate.
It's appropriate because air pollution is not your concern?
Well, it's appropriate because if you looked at all the fields in town, you'll notice they're all next to highways.
But I thought that Parsippany wants to go green. So are we going to add one more bad location on top of other bad locations? There are public acts that you can look at that during rush hour, these places have the same level of air pollution as Manhattan.
Mr. O'Neill, I would, I would appreciate if you would allow your witnesses to testify.
All right. Mr. Myola?
Yes, no air quality study was performed in connection this development. And as Mr. O'Neill said, it's a, it's not uncommon for an athletic field to be adjacent to the highway. I know on Route 46 to the northeast of here, there's, there's another field, I believe, off Smith. So this would be pretty analogous to what's, what's there.
Okay, I'm going to leave my comment to that, to the comment section of the public hearing to voice my concern about that.
That's it. Thank you, Iva. Thank you for your question.
Okay, I see James Barberio's hand up. James, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for giving the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm really going to reserve most of my comments for closing. But as you know, I know this road pretty well. I grew up on Parsippany Road. And it's tons and tons of traffic. And as Scott Carson was saying, the attorney with regards to the crossing for the children from the, to go to the schools, it's a pretty busy street, Parsippany Road, especially in the morning. How do I know? I walked that route to school. I know exactly when you get in the morning, seven o'clock, when you need to get to school, but well, not in the seven, that was in high school. But there's a lot of traffic on that road. And if you're going to build a project like this, you have to secure the safety of the schoolchildren. Now, I, I heard about the shuttle bus. To me, that sounds like we'll give you a shuttle bus in lieu of approval. And I saw, I see where the, where the attorney was going with that. I would agree with that. But that being said, that road is going to be busier. That road is going to be congested even more when this project is finished. But I will reserve my closing statements for the public session at the next meeting.
So do you have a question to go with that, sir?
No, there's no question because basically, when I, when the question is asked, all, all you guys continue to mingle. Because this is a very difficult way to have a meeting because you break up, you can hardly hear anybody. You go in and out and it's not, I get it, the whole COVID pandemic. But it's really hard. I've been kicked off once or twice, not by you, but just by reception alone. I, sometimes I couldn't even hear some of the experts when they were speaking because it's just, you know, not everyone's going to get good reception. So I think a project this big really should be done in open public. And you should, you should seek another building, like the school building, like I did when I was the mayor. I didn't have the COVID pandemic, but I went to the high school so the public can be heard and be heard in a better fashion. This is just, it's a very difficult, difficult way to, to hear a project with 600 units on a WebEx event, or even if you were to do Zoom, very difficult because you could very, at times I didn't even understand what some of the experts were saying because you couldn't hear it. It would break up. And you'd have background noise and then you would have feedback. So that being said, I will reserve my comments for the next meeting. So that being said, I will reserve my comments for the next meeting.
Very good. Nora, do we have any other questions from the public?
There are no other questions.
Okay. Well, then, at this point in time, it would be appropriate to have a public comment section? Would any members of the public care to comment at this time?
Uh, Mr. Von Aiken, if I may, you might wanna reserve public comment until we've closed testimony. So you you may wanna adjourn the meeting at this point. Um, continue at the next meeting or the next available meeting. Um, and reserve public comment until all the testimony's been heard.
Your cutoff time. I I I wouldn't wanna give the uh the residents that showed up for this um call.
I I I I agree, but usually public comment is reserved until all the testimony has been heard, so they can provide public co- necessary public public comment.
Okay, understood. Um. Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy here, I would propose a motion.
Uh, one moment, Mr. Mealy. I I wanna confirm that um Mr. O'Neil um understands what we need from him by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. O'Neil, do you, do you have everything you need in order to prepare for the next meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, uh, through the back and forth with the board's professionals, we were able to get clarities what the questions are and should be able to answer those questions rather quickly.
Mr. O'Neil, I I am sure that you can be provided a uh recording of this meeting, so you can clarify all of that.
We'll provide you with a transcript. I believe the recording is through your I T piece.
It's good. I would love your transcript. That would make my life much easier.
You'll definitely get that, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's it's Susan Favati. Um, if you won't mi- if you don't mind, I I thought it would might be good to just recap, make sure that Mr. O'Neil has caught everything. Um, because I'm not gonna go back and belabor the side sidewalk issues. I think you've got that, Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah.
But ju- just a few other items that I wanna make sure we capture. Um, since we talked about the retaining walls being being tiered, I'd like to see the changes and what that looks like on plan. Uh, we talked about internal sidewalks, um, just to the north of the the townhomes on the eastern side of the site. There was mentioned EV charging stations in the garages, and I just wanna make sure that we have a plan that shows where those are, if we don't already. Um, Mr. Minno indicated that he would be coming back at a later date for signage. Um, if it's at all possible to do it now, it would just be easier um rather than having to come back before this, for an amended site plan. Um, so if you're able to provide anything that just shows that you you're gonna comply, I think that would be sufficient. Um, and then just confirming that the latest changes on the bedroom mix don't affect parking, uh, that can't be accommodated.
Sure.
That's all I have, in addition to the extended discussion about pedestrian and schoolchildren, which I think you've got.
I did.
Okay. Alright, well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to adjourn this meeting, subject to a subsequent meeting to be determined by our secretary.
I I believe we have to pick a hearing date.
Yeah, we we need to continue this meeting to a certain date.
Okay.
Correct. So if Joe, if you are looking for a hearing date uh dedicated solely to this application, we're going to have to carry this to November twenty-third to give me time to work up next year's calendar of students, have it approved by the board, and then we will announce your new hearing date. Otherwise, uh.
A special meeting.
Share, there's a special meeting if if that was open to the board members. Otherwise, I have two dates I could put you on uh where there's other applicants.
What are the dates with other applicants?
I have December twenty-first. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm uh December seventh, and the next one's probably a little bit too soon for you, October fifth.
I'll take October fifth.
Okay. So we can carry this application to October fifth.
Mr. Mealy, you have the date for your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the uh adjournment of this meeting until October fifth, subject to uh public uh notice.
Yeah, subject to no further public notice necessary.
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, second Dinsmore. Nora, go ahead and uh call the vote.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel? Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken?
Yes. Alright.
Thank you. I'd like to put on the record, if I may, that we'll grant all necessary extensions through uh the meeting of October.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Mr. Mealy and and Mr. Mendel, if you need any more assistance um getting online on video, I'm I'm glad to assist you with that, so please let me know.
I will allow, I will let you know about the video. I could not get the video going tonight. I'll let you know.
I I I have extra equipment that I can set you up with if need be.
Thank you so much.
Anytime.
I had no problems.
Good.
And just one suggestion, headphones that have the microphones in them do a better job of preventing the reverberation.
Agreed.
Okay.
If you're working with speakers and a microphone, you're likely a cause of reverberation. Just a suggestion.
So.
Are we adjourned?
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
I believe we have no other business before the board tonight. Um, so would it be appropriate to close the meeting, or did the adjournment take care of that? Sorry, I'm not up to date.
I I I know we carried the, carried the meeting. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
You did that already.
Thank you. That's what I was worried about.
Alright, very good.
Good night.
Alright, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.